Plus there's 150 foot in your wagon.
Yeah, I gave that back.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I gave it back.
I would have been taking that that day. Thirty years from now.
Who?
Thirty years from now.
Oh, yeah. Yep. When we're at the old timers. You remember that call?
All right. If I could get everybody's attention, I think we're going to go ahead and get started with the work session tonight because I do know I think we're going to need every minute that we have available to be able to get through our discussion tonight. So with that, Al, I think I got there right. Yep, I need a roll call.
Excuse me. Benson.
Here.
Brunick.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Minor.
Here.
Schramm.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
City Attorney Denherter.
Here.
All right, before we get to the work session agenda, we do have in the work session a chance for public appearances, which is a chance for anybody in the public to address us about something not on the work session agenda tonight. Seeing nobody move, tonight on the work session agenda is the Yankton Volunteer Fire Department Proposals. I know Amy and I shared with the media on Friday that there are three commissioners that have a conflict of interest with the work session tonight, but that doesn't mean work stops. And so actually you can see Commissioner Weber is not able to join us tonight. The other two individuals that will be pretty mute tonight and quiet will be Commissioner Villanueva and myself, who all have ties to the fire department. So don't think that we don't care if we're not commenting tonight. By advice of our city attorney, it would be wise of us not to. So don't think it's not a matter near and dear to our heart. And Commissioner Villanueva, I understand you have something you want to say as well.
Yes, Madam Mayor, because I do have a direct conflict of interest, I will be leaving my desk here, the desk here, but I'll be sitting in the public to attend the meeting, but I'll be leaving my chair. Just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So with that, then I will turn it over to City Manager Leon to walk us through what's being proposed tonight.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission, public, and the Yankton Volunteer Fire Department. We are here tonight, Chief Tim Linky and I, as well as Chad Miller, who is our president, there he is, of the Yankton Volunteer Fire Department, and some of our volunteer firefighters, to visit with you a little bit about a few proposals that we've been working on jointly. So as we come to you, these aren't just my ideas or Chief Tim's ideas or the volunteers' ideas. This is born out of a few months of discussion and talking with the volunteers about a number of things pertaining to their business. And so we bring them forward for you tonight as sort of that package proposal. And certainly President Miller and Chief Linky are welcome to join me or join the other microphone and share in the presentation. And you may have questions for them as well. Nothing for you to vote on, of course, tonight because it is a work session. And you'll see later on, as we discuss in the memo, there will be some items brought forward to you based on what we talk about tonight. Those will come in the form of resolutions or perhaps ordinance changes or at the budget. So bringing the concept forward to you now, looking for your feedback this evening and over the course of the next couple of months, so we can kind of understand where you're headed. I wanted to talk with you a little bit to sort of start off giving a little bit of history. And some of you may know more history than I did, but this coming year, 2024, will mark 150th anniversary of the Yankton Volunteer Fire Department, which is pretty phenomenal. I don't know that there's a whole lot more than the town itself that's lasted longer than the volunteer fire department. So I think certainly we should get extra pancakes that September and we should have the option of steak and shrimp at Boss's Night and all these good things that the firemen do for us. But beyond the social aspects of the fire department, you know, they're the local protectors of our properties, they're looking out for us. And what makes them very special is not just that they're our volunteer fire department members, but they're our next door neighbors and they're our, in some cases, our husbands and they're our friends. And so, you know, they have a vested interest in keeping Yankton and our family safe because in doing so, they're keeping their family safe as well. And so I think that brings an added value to what they do for us professionally as firemen and firewomen. You know, they have skin in the game and that's because they're protecting the community that they love. So I wanted to bring, just put that in context. It's not completely unheard of that a town of 15,000 would have a volunteer fire department. But when I travel around the country for city manager things, I always get kind of the head tilt when I talk about our volunteer fire department, that we're a community of our size and we don't have a fully employed, full-time, paid fire department. You're aware that we have two paid fire professionals. But the rest of these folks are doing this largely for the benefit that it brings the community and because they believe in public service. And so, you know, many people have paid departments, which would not only cause a lot of impact in your budget, but it would also have, make everything else in the city a lot different if we were to move to a full. So we need to recognize that that's something of value, also something a tradition, that's a tradition for our fire department and something that in the strategic planning process that the volunteers just went through, as well as members of the public, they felt was very important to maintain, is that spirit of volunteerism and the pride they have in that in that organization. And that said, we have to think a little bit about the fact that it's difficult to find volunteers. You all know that from the various things that you are participating in and ask people to participate in. And then you ask them to volunteer to potentially put themselves in a life jeopardizing or safety jeopardizing situation. That takes it to a whole new bar. So it's difficult to find that and it's difficult to find people that understand and are willing to commit that kind of time, dedication, and training. So part, I tell you all that because part of the recommendation, this recommendation this evening is about keeping that spirit of volunteerism and being an attractive entity or organization for people to volunteer and participate in. How am I doing so far?
Excellent.
Okay. We're good. They'll let me know, I'm sure, if I'm not, if I'm, if we're, if I'm going off track here. So the strategic planning started in 2022 and part of that strategic plan is talking about retention and call pay and just general organizational practices and administration. And so those are some of the things that this evening we're going to talk about and some of the things that the volunteers and Chief Linky and I think that the city should do in order to keep those things as strong as they currently are and perhaps enhance them. So let's talk a little bit first about call pay. So for a long time, the volunteers have received a nominal call pay. And under the Fair Labor Standards Act, volunteer associations can receive a nominal fee for call pay. And so, you know, not to take away from the fact that they're volunteers, but you have to imagine when they are volunteering, they're responding with their technology, they're responding with their, you know, personal vehicles. Oftentimes they're responding with their personal dollars because I know some of the things they do, they're putting dollars into themselves. I'm not talking about equipment for the fire department, but I'm talking about social aspects and things that our department brings to our community. So this has gone on for a long time in Yankton and right now that call pay is at $10 per call. So that's something that the city pays out to the volunteer department and they administer to their members right now. That's not unheard of, we're not unusual with that. North Sioux City, for example, does that as well. They reimburse at $10 per call. Spearfish reimburses at 15 per call and 15 per department activity. So, you know, that's something to just think about. We have volunteer fire departments that are hybrids like ours in North Sioux City and Spearfish. Mitchell and Pierre are full-time, I believe. So, you know, they're not any bigger and in fact, I think Mitchell might be a little smaller than we are. And they're operating with a full-time fire department. They do provide EMS services, but so that's a lot different. I believe full-time starting pay for a full-time firefighter in Mitchell right now is $22 an hour, not including the benefits and all the other expenses, taxes, et cetera, that go on. So when you talk about the $10 per call, that's whether the call lasts for 10 minutes or whether it lasts for 10 hours or, you know, whether you have an interim chief and something happens with the natural gas and it lasts a long time. So just keeping that in mind, they can be there all night and it's a $10. How long it's been at $10 is a little bit of a mystery that has been, is unsolved. We asked finance to go back and look for the resolution because you all set the resolution to determine when, what call pay is. We can't find it. So I don't know. We went, I went back in the history to, with Lisa to see if we could find that. We could find when it was set at $8 per call, but not 10. But we think it's been, based on local historian, soon to be retired from the city, Brian Frick. He thinks that it's been a number of decades, it's been $10. So $10 today is not probably what $10 was yesterday. Would you go on a call for the same amount where you, of a, you know, McDonald's? I don't know, you know? So just keeping that, that amount in mind. What did that, what does that mean for us sort of financially at $10 per call? In 2020, we paid out $9,600 roughly, almost, almost $10,000, $9,690 in call pay. In 2021, that was $11,000 and in 2022, that was $13,730 that we paid out in call pay. So, you know, this could be a nature of calls increasing. Maybe we're having a slight increased number of calls. We may be getting a little better response, maybe a combination of both, but these numbers are based on sort of the average, you know, average call number. So we're proposing that that be increased and that's why I gave you that background, from $10 to $30 per call. And that we also include drills because while we're here Monday nights, they're at the station Monday nights, training and, you know, learning how to fight fires and operate vehicles and maintain things and all that good stuff. So that's what we're going to be proposing. That will account for the greatest impact on the general fund of the things we're going to talk about tonight. We currently have about $25,000 budgeted in the fire department professional services call pay. And that's where we take the call payout of his professional services. So it's estimated that that would need to increase substantially to about $132,000. And that's based on worst case scenario budgeting, which we always do at the city or we try to do. We try to budget our expenses high and our revenue low, as you know. That would be if all 50 firemen that we have respond to all calls and based on the average number of calls we have now. So I do not expect it to be that much, but as you know, fire is a general fund expenditure. So we have to be careful there. It's not like water or another type of utility. So we need to be careful there and make sure that we're budgeting generously when we make changes. So that's how we got that estimate and we can talk more about that if you'd like. We're also proposing that we consider some back pay for the volunteer fire department back to this January 1, so January 1, 2023, to that $30. That would require a supplement in the 2023 budget. And we ask that because we had hoped to have this all before you sooner. And when we started looking at this, we kind of kept peeling back layers of the onion and saying, oh, we, maybe this is a good time to take care of this piece and that piece and trying to do, have you consider a lot of things at one time. Lisa Yardley suggests, along with Brittany Orr, that perhaps we would create a different line item in the budget and not take it out of professional services. We can talk about that at budget time. They have some reasoning for that, but we can talk about that. They also recommend and we propose that we talk about putting our volunteer fire department on our paperless UKG payroll system. They're not, that wouldn't turn them into employees, so you wouldn't have to worry about that, but allow us to administer them through that system so we can issue the proper tax forms, et cetera, for the volunteer firefighters at that time. The payroll administration is estimated to cost about 350 per person, but once they're in the system, that's not annual, that's, we just need to get them up on the system. As you know, our volunteers usually typically last with us, last a long time for us in the city. So to us, that's a small expense to cover that administration over a long number of years or period of time. And we have a lot of our firemen who are already city employees, so many of whom are already in that system. They wouldn't be categorized as city employees for that pay. There'd be a special, I guess, category to put in the call pay and we would do that electronically. So we believe that would be, provide a better paper trail, both for the city and for the fire department members. The Rural Fire Association, so most of, I think most, maybe all, but many, at least of our firemen are also involved in the rural department. They might be interested in having us serve as their sort of administrative arm as well. And I've talked with their president and, you know, I'm willing to sit down and talk about that and I'm, you know, if the commission's amenable to that. To me, that would require a contract with the rural department, be a separate discussion item with you, and ultimately you would have to approve that contract. We're not afraid or opposed to doing that. We just think that it's, you know, not necessarily specific to what we're asking for this evening. And so I want to leave that as a separate issue to bring forward to you if they should ask and be serious about that. Probably charge them a nominal fee for that because it does take some time, you know, to administer the paperwork, et cetera, for all those things. So that's topic one. I'm going to stop there, take a drink of water and see if anyone has any comments or questions.
So we're looking at potentially budgeting about 100,000 more for this year than we have in the current budget?
Yes.
Okay. And I, do you have an idea where we might find that?
No.
Okay.
I'm, I'm working out, we're working out that idea. We're in that season where it's, you know, what, the three months of budget and 10 months of compromise or what did you call it, Al? No, we're setting priorities right now and talking about that, but I appreciate the comment because it's going to come from somewhere. Something that you decide to fund is at the expense of something else. I expect our revenue will continue to increase, but our expenses have increased as well. But I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I would say infrastructure, public safety, those are the main, those are the main things we're doing. And then the other stuff is great and we should do them, but we have to do public safety, we have to do infrastructure. That will be my opinion. So I think this is important enough to prioritize.
Just a logistics question. So if, if we go into the employee system, then would we be calculating payment per month? Would it be every three months? Do you have any idea of how that would work?
You know, I would talk probably with the president to see how often that they feel they want to. Right now, I think it's annually or that they get their pay. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. So if they, you know.
So we wouldn't be bound if they're in our system? We could still determine.
We can still do it annually.
Gotcha.
It would give us the flexibility if we wanted to do it differently. And I don't have any, I'm not married to any way, any way they prefer.
Yep, just totally curious. Thank you.
I do have a quick question regarding the 24,420 up to 132,500. Just trying to get my head wrapped around how that, you know, because you're looking at, you know, a $10 to $30, you're dealing with, you know, two thirds more. I'm just trying to figure out like how does, where is the additional expense just for, for my understanding and for everyone else's?
So we, Chief Tim and I had a lot of discussions about how we were going to put this in the memo. You know, right now, professional services, we do use, we do take call pay out of professional services, but that's not the only thing we take out of professional services. So maybe a special speaker or a special contract with somebody that would come in, you know, that could potentially come out of professional services. So, and we talked about, you know, let's give them the worst case number and then we can walk backwards from there. That would be again, if all 50 folks responded to the current average number of calls based on five year calls. And we know that isn't going to happen because, you know, somebody's, not everyone can make every call due to either work schedule or time of day or what have you. So it would be south of that. But again, I hate to, I hate to shoot low and be wrong. So we'd probably be, maybe not this generous, maybe not $130,000 generous, but we'd probably be generous in the budgeting and then be able to monitor that and walk that back once we have more information. This might, you know, entice more call response. I don't think that has been a problem. You know, our folks are good at showing up when they get called for service, but I think that might encourage, you know, more response as well.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I guess the thing that I'm looking at is, you know, I understand that the 132,5 is, is like a worst case scenario. I'm just wondering, you know, is the 24,420, like was that?
Part of that number?
No, I mean, was that a worst case scenario number also or is that, like how was that number?
How are we coming up with that number now?
How did we come up with that number last year? That's per se.
So based on, on the call pay that was paid out in previous years and then actually last year, I was working with, you know, Brad Moser and Dwayne on the budget because we didn't have Tim yet. So we kind of looked at past administrative expenses that came out of professional services and made our best estimate, not for sure knowing because we didn't, I think we had Tim at that time, but we didn't have him full up and running. We didn't know for sure certain what he was going to bring to the department and what he might charge from professional services, other than call pay.
Okay.
I'm going to keep moving on here unless somebody else wants to ask a question. If I go to my sister's house in Brookings and start a fire in her kitchen, the Brookings Volunteer Fire Department would respond. They have a different, little bit of a different setup than we do. They, I don't believe, have a call pay for their volunteers, but they have a retirement system that they have put in place for their volunteers. So South Dakota Codified Law, which is 10449 and 9.2, which is attached to your packet this evening, provides for distribution of taxes placed on fire insurance premiums to fire departments. So every fire department gets what we call the fire insurance premium check and that amount is distributed to each department based on population. And ours this year was about $59,000, so $58,707.58. State law has some requirements for which we can use the premium. So operating expenses is one of those and that's previously what we've used it for. But the other is pension contributions. So in Brookings, the way they incentivize or the way they thank their volunteers is with a pension using their fire insurance premium. So we're also requesting and proposing this evening that when that check is issued to our volunteer fire department, to the city of Yankton, that we then issue that amount to the volunteer fire department so they can use that for a pension, which would be set up under a pension committee. So the volunteers would select members to administer that pension committee and they would divide, divide that check up evenly amongst the volunteer members that they have and it would be vested into a pension for them. So they would work with a financial consultant of their choice to invest those dollars. We think that that's a, not only a good thank you going forward to volunteers, but also a really nice way to be attractive to new folks coming on the department. I mean, when you think of the fact that, I think some of the retirements we had last year were 35 years, 37 years, something like that, putting that dollar amount in a pension every year as it builds makes a lot of sense. So that's another recommendation this evening that we have for the Commission. Any questions on the pension or the fire insurance premium check?
I don't have questions specific to that. But is there a threshold at a point where between the pension and the $30 per call pay, if it got to a certain amount that all of a sudden takes them from being a volunteer? I mean, because of the amount they're being paid?
We're only laughing, Bridgette, because we knew Bridgette was going to have HR questions and we, we had the same questions. So one of the things, and maybe I should have said this to back up, that when we started down this sort of path, we had a lot of the same questions and, and Tim kind of waved his arms and he said, look, we need to have some professional training here to help us understand Fair Labor Standards Act. So he pulled in Brittany Orr, Lisa Yardley, Ross Denherter, myself and a number of the volunteers. So we were all hearing the same thing about where do you cross that threshold of employee versus volunteer? Ross, you're probably, since it was an attorney that gave us the training, best suited to explain that.
All right. It's extremely complicated, but the, the long and short of it is, if I was going to summarize it, the compensation must still be considered nominal. And there are poorly written old statutes that govern how a court would determine whether it's nominal. But the Department of Labor provides some practical guidance, rules of thumb, and ultimately we had to stay within a framework where it was less than a particular mathematical formula based on, I believe it was a 20% rule. It can't be more than 20% of what a full-time person doing that for a living would make for the same amount of work. But that's not even the statute, that's a Department of Labor guideline or rule of thumb that they use to determine whether they're going to raise a stink. It's not what the court will necessarily decide. So we had to find the right balance between being too generous and crossing that threshold, but adjusting our nominal consideration to a point that's more in line with the times. And this seemed like a pretty good fallback. Plus, we had a lot more flexibility introducing this pension. There's more authorization for retirement type compensation.
So I did offer some comparisons of other communities of what they're doing, but I think this is what I call kind of like stretchy pants in the sense that what's right for some person isn't right for the other, what's right for one community isn't right for the other. So we have to decide what that means for us and that's, you know, fortunately or unfortunately the difficult position you're put in, but what's nominal for us? So, you know, I look at this as like, these guys are firemen all the time. Tonight, they're on call all the time, all the time. I mean, we're asking them to come and answer that call 24 hours a day. So I realize that, you know, there's many days that there isn't a fire and thank goodness for that. But, I mean, there is a lot of time put in there and a lot of training whether or not a call takes place or not. So I, you know, I realize that we're going up quite substantially when you consider pension as well as an increase in pay. And, you know, I don't think we've increased the pay at least, I know we haven't in at least 10 years and probably not in the last 20. And it's not as, it's not necessarily as much money as it might sound. So that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Did you, Amy, I may have missed this. Did you mention how many years someone would have to be a volunteer for their vested in that pension or is it automatic from year one?
I believe it's automatic. So I think the only regulation state statute has is that, you know, if you have more than two paid professionals, then you have to use that premium for, for the retirement or for, you know, for that. So as long as we have two or fewer, that is optional, but, you know, you can split that up. So the volunteers could perhaps say, okay, you know, 40,000 of that we'd like to go into a pension and, you know, the remainder we'd like to use for operational, but that's not what they're asking. They will get a portion, I believe, from the Rural Association and they can use that for some of their operating, should they so choose. But they were thinking about distributing that completely among all members that are active members. I think they have to be members in good standing and they have their own rules, you know, to abide by on that.
The other thing I'd like to point out is, once we cross that threshold with three full-time employees, it has to be used for that anyway. So this is kind of the, the natural progression of things anyway. And if we're addressing it now, we might as well just get ourselves ready for the future.
It is not associated with South Dakota retirement. I should probably say that. So this doesn't mean that our city employees who also happen to be fire department are doing, you know, getting something more. It's completely on their own. They would talk to a financial investor and figure out how they wanted to do their pension. The last sort of bigger topic that I want to bring forward is increasing the number of captains in the city. So you have attached Ordinance 819 that authorizes the fire department that authorizes the fire department to consist of one chief, one deputy chief, one volunteer first assistant fire chief, one volunteer second assistant fire chief, and volunteer fire captains and firefighters, the number of which shall be determined from time to time by resolution. So that's where you come in. Do we just turn the air on? Okay. Okay. So, so that's where you come in. To, right now, we have, I believe, four captains. And what we're asking to do is increase that by one. And that has something to do with something I don't understand called span of control. So I think what that means is having sort of, where I look at it as teams, or six firemen for every captain, so they could have a span of control. So if Chief Linky or one of the volunteers would like to explain that further, they're welcome to, but I figure they know what they're talking about. Captains do get some additional pay. Again, it's quite nominal. The, oh, excuse me, I misspoke. It's not four to five, it's five to six, pardon me. They do receive $300 per year in addition to their call pay. So again, another nominal fee. So that would be an additional $300 that would be budgeted in that 132,000 we talked about earlier, so. We can talk more about that if you would like, but I'll summarize first of all so we can have some discussion time. So if these things seem amenable to you, here's the steps that would happen as we go forward. We'd provide for in the general fund, the call pay increase, as well as bring to you a resolution for back pay for the fireman for this year, 2023. We would budget accordingly for that premium check to be expensed to the volunteer fire department for the purpose, and they would use it for the purpose of a pension fund. Human resources and finance would be directed to coordinate the administration of the said compensation out of UKG. We would budget for that increase in costs for admin work out of the fire department operating. We'd present a resolution to set that reimbursement pay to $30 per drill. And then we present a resolution for the city commission to increase the number of captains from five to six. So you would see a number of different actions before you, over a period of time. But that's why we're talking tonight, so we can, not that we won't have discussion at the time when these things are presented to you, but, you know, think of all the discussions. For example, we need to have a budget session, and this one is, you know, taking the time it takes. So I wanted to kind of give you a preview of what we'll be looking forward to then. So with that, questions for me or for President Miller or Chief Linky? Or the volunteers?
I've got something real quick that's not necessarily a question, but more, more statement. I was, talked with Tom Holmstrom today, who is the president, director, president of the rural district. And he had, he had asked me just to let everyone know that, that the rural district has, has already approved the $30 per pay, just per, per call, just for consistency matters. You know, we have rural and we have city, and, and, you know, it's the same folks that are going, going to either one. And I just wanted to relay that information that he gave to me.
Yeah, thank you. I knew they were talking about that, but I wasn't certain it had been acted on, so.
And just so that, I want to make sure that we're not interchanging some of the designations, but Yankton Volunteer Fire Department, and there's also the association that's been talked about. So what exactly is going to be the role that the association is going to play, whether it's a 501(c)(3) or (c)(4)?
Thank you for asking that, because that's something I didn't talk about. And it is in the memo. The department has been working towards their status as a 501(c)(3). And so that application has been made. That takes a number of months to complete and to have approved, but that has been put together. So they'll be looking for their, I don't know if you call it a ward letter or their status letter. So that's what they'll be classified as when that's, when that's approved, assuming it's approved.
So given everything that we've talked about in these proposals here tonight, why is a formal association necessary at this point in time?
Well, I think a formal association is appropriate for a couple of reasons. You know, one of them is, you know, everybody's, everybody's got Yankton's best interest in mind. If they're not formed under an association, could they be personally liable if something were to go wrong? That's something that the city attorney and I have sort of jostled around. You know, we trust our community and we trust all our fire professionals, but occasionally in any community, you can get a bad actor or you can get somebody who's litigious when, when people are just trying to help. And so, you know, we felt it was in the best interest of both the volunteers and the city that they have a formal organization to operate under from a legal perspective and a financial perspective as well. So that's my opinion. Ross, you might have a different legal opinion.
Sure. We also have an ordinance that says, behold, there shall be a Yankton Firefighters Association. So this is, we just assumed there always was one, and lo and behold, we looked. Ordinance says we have to have one, and one doesn't exist. So this is kind of a carrying through what probably should have been done, you know, 30 years ago, 40 years ago. But better late than never, and it's an opportunity to revisit from the top to the bottom how everything is structured, to make sure it complies with the law, protects our firefighters, and just provides the springboard for all good things to come.
So then, for instance, under Topic 2, the fire insurance premium, down at the bottom of the proposal where it says, "The fund will be entirely managed and overseen by the Yankton Volunteer Fire Department through a firefighter pension committee." Are either of those entities under or including the association that we're talking about? Or is that still considered city work?
In my opinion, that would be managed by the association. The dues will pass through their accounts. Dues is the wrong word. The, the money coming from the fire insurance premiums will pass on to that, the association to manage. But they have a regulatory structure that they have to follow based on how that money is used. So, you know, there's always going to be some guidance from the city to make sure everything is done right, but it will be theirs to oversee.
Okay, gotcha. So then, what we're talking about there, the Yankton Volunteer Fire Department, that's the association?
Yes. In 2022, the fire department developed a five-year strategic plan. Can we, can either you or Chief Linky maybe talk about what your vision for the next five years is?
I think Chief can do that. I can, but.
It's right, we probably need to get him out of the back row like he's at church anyway, so.
You can, you can go, if you want to, you want this microphone, that one?
I'll take this one. Yeah, so back, it was probably about three or four months after I got here, we went through both an internal and external stakeholder process. So we took a good number of interested members with the fire department and also some external stakeholders, members of the community, to engage in the five-year strategic plan, what are we going to look like? And obviously, Amy has talked about the, the desire to maintain a strong volunteer tradition, because that was, that emanated from all parties involved. Obviously, the volunteers want to remain a volunteer association, but also the community is immensely proud of the fact that we, we have a volunteer fire department. So that was a huge part of it. Another area that, that we are going to be engaging in is more community risk reduction. So the things that you see in regard to, in regard to fire safety and things like that, your good old stop, drop, and roll, have a fire escape plan and things like that. While many of those things are valid, we're going to be updating some things, a close-before-you-doze program, because actual research has shown that if you are in a room with a closed door and the room next to it flashes over, which means it completely becomes engulfed in flames, you still are living or staying in survivable space. But that hasn't been something that's been promoted in the community. So as a measure of, of risk reduction here, but also just knowing that our poor and vulnerable populations are more at risk for those types of, those types of issues. We want to make sure that we're addressing those. We want to see a smoke detector under every, in, in as many rooms as possible, but most certainly under every roof in every household in both the, the city and out in the rural fire district. So that's the community risk reduction part, a huge piece, and one that I'm especially passionate about. And, and also it falls into the, the request for an additional captain is operational officer development. So we have a tremendous baseline group of leaders within the department, both formal and informal. And so one of our goals is to make sure that we have succession in place. We have officers, captains, and the like, captains, first assistant chief, right there, who get the experience and the training and have the ability to run incidents on their own. That's not something that they've had a whole lot of opportunities to do. And it requires a tremendous amount of, of training, education, and just getting out and doing it. And so that's a, that's a big piece of the plan. And then, and then finally, having all of our operations fit into what, what I like to say are research-based tactics. So over the past 10 years or so, UL, Underwriters Laboratories, has a fire service research institute, and they have conducted numerous studies on how to fight structured fires. And a lot of the, a lot of the industry is starting to catch up to different methodologies. And a lot of the things that we've been doing have been perfectly fine. They're just codified now in some form of research. However, there are some things that we haven't been doing and want to make sure that we have the right equipment, the right training, and right, right abilities to conduct those operations as well. So that's in a nutshell, the one-page strategic plan. I didn't bring any pictures. If you'd like me to draw some, I'd be happy to. Answer your question, though?
I really appreciate that overview, and it helps us put tonight's conversation into that larger context, so thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Certainly you want to ask the president some questions, don't you? I will say that, you know, we, we went into this all sort of as a group, city staff and folks from the volunteer fire department, not really knowing what was going to come out, kind of like my cake last week at the bake-off. But, you know, we had a lot of ingredients, and we weren't really sure what was going to taste right and what was right. But I think that we had a great learning process over that exercise. And I think we came out with something that's going to not just serve this department, but serve future departments, which is, I know, something that Chief Linky's interested in and I'm interested in. And I'm, I'm, I think it was really a positive exercise, and I think we're, we came out better and more professional department, more reflective, really, of the caliber of men and women that we have in our department. And so I'm really proud, actually, to bring this forward. And I thank especially President Miller for his patience with me and working on this.
So I can ask a question of the department? Has nothing to do with tonight. I am curious, and actually, being married to a firefighter, I don't know this. So we don't talk a whole lot about the fire department in our home. Where are we at with numbers? I know Amy brought this up, and we talked about this as being an avenue to get more. Do we have a full volunteer fire department? And if not, how many openings do we have? I'm just curious. Yeah, you'll have to go up to the mic, one of you. I was trying to get Chad up there, but all right.
Yeah, she was trying to get Chad. Chad didn't want to, Chad doesn't have his glasses. So he, he, he likes to wear his glasses in public so that everybody can see that handsome face. We have 41 members right now. We're authorized 50.
And out of curiosity, when you have openings or you advertise for openings, do you get a lot of interest? I'm just curious, do you get more than you technically maybe can't take on, but there is some agility and some other testing done? Somebody just doesn't walk in and get on the department, correct?
That is correct. My experience has been we get 11 applicants. And that was just last month. So we're, we're in the middle of the process right now, so we've, we have received 11th, 11. Historically, it sounds like that number is down. And, and I think people sometimes become concerned with, with fewer numbers, people interested in doing these types of things. But that's the case with paying somebody to do the work as well. So 11 was actually, in my mind, was kind of a sweet spot because we're going to be looking for, hopefully, between two and four to be members of the team here in the next few months, and then we'll go out and start recruiting again. How's that? Okay, cool.
Awesome.
All right.
I think this was a very productive process, and I'm glad that the volunteers were able to be involved in creating their own future. Because as was talked about tonight, having a volunteer force is so important to the community and something that we as commissioners and the larger community are very proud of. So hopefully, this sets the stage for, for you to feel like you are an important part of our team and that you're being, you're being rewarded for your, your community service in a way that's, you're a volunteer, but you're also getting what you deserve out of it as well.
Any other thoughts or comments from the commission?
I think, you know, according, you know, to what you said, Commissioner Johnson, it's, it's kind of like when we honored the dispatch a couple, last meeting, two meetings ago. It's never a call you want to make, or probably people you never want to see, but you're always very, very thankful that somebody answers the phone and shows up when you need them. So always important to keep all those folks thankful for the jobs that they do, so.
It should be recognized too, Mayor, that one of the reasons why we're able to keep such a robust volunteer force is our employers in town have always historically been really good about letting folks just drop what they're doing at their job and going to respond to calls. And so that's something that is imperative for us to maintain that volunteer force. So recognizing there, you know, when, when folks aren't there, they're losing money or losing profit or don't have their services there. So that's an important piece of what we're doing too.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. With that, unless there is any last-minute questions while Amy's making her way back to her seat. All right, so with that then, the only other agenda item is other business, and there is no other business in front of the city commission tonight as tied to the work session. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved. Second.
We have a double motion and a double second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Anybody abstaining? All right. This meeting is adjourned, and it appears we'll have about a 10-minute break before we start the city commission meeting.
Hey.